Okay, somehow I lost sound, lost sound feed for a few seconds or a few minutes. So hopefully you heard that. If not, it was one of the great prayers in the history of Christmas. So again, here we go. Alright, tonight Romans 1:18-32. This is one of those classic bad news, good news situations. We've got to know how bad the bad news is, how truly catastrophic the bad news is, so we can appreciate how truly wonderful the good news is. I used to listen to Garrison Keillor all the time. I know he's had a fall from grace in some quarters, but man has a way with words. And he said this, professor and Christian by the way, he said this once, he said about God, he says, "His judgments are unbearable; His kindness and grace are unmeasurable." Pretty well put from Minnesota. Just kidding if you're watching me from Minnesota tonight. Anyway, we saw last week that Paul has made his summary statement about the letter, the reason he's writing the letter. So let me see if I can give it to you here. In chapter 1, verses 16 and 17, he has said, "I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God for salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and also to the Greek; for in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith, as is written, but the righteous man shall live by faith." Now, when Paul writes this about faith, he is contrasting it with works. As I mentioned to you last week, Paul was a man who had tried as hard as any human being ever had to live up to the demands of the law. He was Jewish, called himself a Hebrew of Hebrews. He was ultra zealous in his obedience to the law, called himself a Pharisee of Pharisees. His, his blue blood credentials were impeccable. He's of the tribe of Benjamin. And he said, "Nobody tried harder to obey God's word, God's laws than I did, and I failed miserably." It drove him to despair. And then he met Jesus, and his whole life changed and the whole world changed because of God's call on apostle Paul. And so he's stressing here that the Christian enterprise, the Christian life, is from faith to faith, is from beginning to end, top to bottom, east to west, north, south, east, west. Everything in the Christian life is of faith and not of works. And I gave you a formula, if you will, last time. I'm not big on formulas, but I gave you one last time that I thought would be helpful for you to look at and wrap your mind around as we go forward in this study. And it's simply this. Faith equals justification plus works. Faith equals justification plus works. It is by faith, through the grace of God, by faith that we are justified in God's eyes, and that we also then are enabled to do good works in God's eyes. It's not faith plus works equals justification. It's not justification equals faith plus works. No. Faith yields justification and works. And I gave you this image last time, or at least I tried to anyway, of, and if I could draw better, I would have drawn it for you. But the image of a tree, if you envision the Christian life this way, think of a tree. Grace is the roots. The trunk is faith, faith is the trunk. And the branches, the leaves, and the fruit are our good works. So in the Christian life, grace is the roots, faith is the trunk, and our good works, which grow out of our faith, which is based in God's grace, the yield of, the produce of, the fruit of, the grace of God through faith in our lives is the good works that we are enabled therefore to do for Him. So now, having made this statement that the Christian life is of faith from beginning to end and so forth, Paul is now going to tell you why it has to be about faith. And so with that, we get into, let me quote from my not related cousin, Tim Keller, I'll remind you again, Tim is battling pancreatic cancer. It'd be good for you to remember him. Tim Keller says this, "Paul's nutshell outline in verses 16 and 17 raises a question. Why must the righteous live by faith? Why is receive righteousness, why is receive righteousness the only way to be in right standing with God?" Paul will spend from chapter 1, verse 18, to chapter 3, verse 20, showing us why we need God to give us righteousness, why we cannot earn, deserve, or attain it ourselves. And then, following up on that, Francis Schaeffer writes as follows. Luther pointed out that the gospel really includes both gospel and law. There's no use telling them that they must be saved, the gospel, till they feel a need for salvation, a need that the law reveals. You maybe have had the experience that I have, trying to tell someone else about your experience as a Christian, your transition, your transformation from a non-Christian to a Christian, telling somebody else what God has done in your life. And you're so convinced of the truth, of the reality of your experience, and you want that other person to experience it as well. But he or she has no sense of any need for God. They've got money, they've got a home, they've got a good job, they've got a car, they're in a relationship, whatever, doing well in school, doing well in sports, whatever situation, they look at you and say, "I'm doing fine. Why would I need God? Why would I need any more of God than what I've got right now?" But when things get desperate, we realize our desperate need for God. And that's when we get more open to the gospel. If there's a silver lining to this blasted virus, this pandemic, the damage it has done to our country, to our city, to the world, there's a silver lining to it. It may be that people are more open now to hearing about eternal things because of our temporal situation. And you can throw on top of that all the civil unrest that this country is experiencing. Maybe the people are a little more open right now to hearing about eternal things than they have been maybe in a long, long time. If that's the case, let's try to take advantage of the situation. God works well in chaos sometimes, I think, for people like ourselves who normally have life pretty good. Even the poorest person in this country lives better than the wealthiest people in other countries. We have been extraordinarily blessed in this nation. Remember that Saturday as we celebrate Independence Day. On that, by the way, parentheses, I just reposted a blog I wrote a number of years ago where I pointed out what some of the founders and the framers and the settlers of this country had to say about the role of religious faith, their views of God, and especially the Christian faith, the role that our faith has played in the foundation and formation of this country. Do not let anybody tell you that Christianity wasn't a big influence in building this country into what it was. Flaws and all, and we have been a flawed country. We still are, and we always will be, because it's full of flawed people. Still the greatest nation in the history of the world, and I will brook no argument. Anyway, I have no idea, maybe start going down that road, other than to say how blessed we are in this country beyond what many other people in this world can begin to imagine. But our point of reference has been that things were really good up until about mid-March maybe this year for us, and the world began to fall apart. People might be a little more open to the gospel right now, have been in a while. So Paul begins explaining why people need a Savior. He explains the need for salvation first, as it applies to the Gentiles, and then he explains how it applies to the Jews, and then he explains how it applies to all of humanity. So Francis Schaeffer says this. Yeah, let me just quote Francis Schaeffer for you. He says, "Paul speaks first to the person who does not have the Bible," this is live, folks, "Paul speaks first to the person who does not have the Bible, that's the Gentile, then to the person who does have the Bible, that's the Jew. That, after all, was the main difference between the Jews and Gentiles of Paul's day. And those two categories will certainly help us apply Paul's teaching to our world today. Why does everyone in the world need a Savior? Here's why, and it is not a pretty picture. Here we go. "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all unguileness and unrighteousness of men who suppress the truth and unrighteousness; for that which is known about God is evident within them; for God made it evident to them. For since the creation of the world, His invisible attributes, His eternal power and divine nature have clearly been seen, being understood through what has been made, so that they were without excuse; for even though they knew God, they did not honor Him as God or give thanks; but they became futile in their speculations, and their foolish heart was darkened. Professing to be wise, they became fools; exchanged the glory of the incorruptible God for an image and a form of corruptible man, and of birds, and forfeited animals, and crawling creatures. Therefore God gave them over in the lusts of their hearts to impurity, so that their bodies would be dishonored among them; for they exchanged the truth of God for a lie, and worshipped and served the creature rather than Creator, who is blessed forever. Amen. For this reason, God gave them over to degrading passions; for the women exchanged the natural function for that which is unnatural; and in the same way also the men abandoned the natural function of the woman, and burned in their desire toward one another, men with men committing indecent acts, and receiving their own persons the due penalty of their error. And just as they did not see fit to acknowledge God any longer, God gave them over to a depraved mind, to do those things which are not prosper, being filled with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice; they are gossips, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedient to parents, without understanding, untrustworthy, unloving, unmerciful; and although they know the ordinance of God, that those who practice such things are worthy of death, they not only do the same, but they also give hearty approval to those who practice them." Did I mention this is not a pretty picture? This is a picture of humanity basically at its worst. And Paul is drawing this picture on purpose to show the contrast between the goodness of God and His grace against the evil and wickedness and depravity of man and woman, humanity at our worst. And so Paul says that we are, we are not spiritually neutral outside of Christ. We are not people who are weighing things out, maybe we will, maybe we won't move toward God. No, outside of Christ, pre-Christ, we are in a state of absolute rebellion against God. And it leads us to do things, to be things, to say things, to do things that are unspeakable in public, at least they used to be unspeakable in public. And so this argument then moves through several clearly marked stages. And I hope you notice, as I read those words to you, if you have your Bible up in front of you somewhere or on your phone, I hope you notice that there was a key phrase in those verses where God gave them over. Paul says that three times in this passage, where God gave them over. It's a very loaded phrase, and it's a very chilling phrase. He says, "We are exposed to the wrath of God," verse 18, "we are under God's wrath." The Greek word that is translated wrath here is the word orgae. And it's exactly where we get our word orgy. Now, I assume probably, if you're watching this, and you're older than 12, you probably know what an orgy is. I don't think I need to give you a definition of terms there. But think of this in terms of not just a sexual orgy, think of this in terms not of a sexual orgy, but an absolute outpouring, an overflow of God's wrath is an orgy of God's wrath. And that's a frightening prospect. God isn't just a little ticked off. He's not just kind of irked. He's furious. He's furious. And His wrath is overflowing against the wickedness and evilness of people. I want you to think, if you know your Bible at all, I want you to think of some other examples of God's wrath. You can think back to Genesis 6, 7, and 8, where God destroys humanity by flood. You can think of Exodus, chapter, chapters 6 through 12, where God leases the plagues on Egypt. I skipped over Genesis 19, where He pours out His wrath on Sodom and Gomorrah. There's Numbers 11, where the people have rebelled against God in the wilderness. He pours out His wrath on them with pestilence and so forth. This is, this is, this is a chilling, frightening picture of a God who's basically said, "I have had enough of this rebellion and disobedience, and I'm not, I'm not a God to be trifled with. I do not wink at sin. I do not sit back and say, from my cosmic rocking chair in front porch in heaven, 'Well, boys will be boys. Let them have their fun.'" No, this is a holy God. We don't mess around with Him. And when we do, we lose. Some of you who are big Marvel Comics fans will know who the Incredible Hulk is. And you know, when he's still Professor Bruce Banner, and somebody starts to get him angry, you know what he says? "Don't make me angry. You won't like me when I'm angry." And God says in a much bigger way, "Don't make me angry. You will not like me when I'm angry." Here's something that John Murray, the great theologian of the last century, reformed warhorse, here's what he says, "Wrath is the holy revulsion of God's being against that which is the contradiction of His holiness." Let me leave that there for a minute so you can take a look at it. "The holy revulsion of God's being against that which is the contradiction of His holiness." As you look at that, let me ask you the question. When was the last time you were revulsed? When was the last time you were revulsed? About a half an hour before this livestream started, a friend of mine sent me a video of a town in, it looks like this is real, not a parody of some sort, some town in Florida where they invited a Satanist to come in and lead the invocation. And he appeals to every mythical deity that the world has known, and he mocks Jesus and Christianity while he does it. And this town council stands there and listens while this man offers this as an invocation. Again, I don't know for sure that that's real. It may have been a parody of some sort, but it sure looks real. And I was revulsed by what I saw. Really? Really? You broken and twisted little soul? You dare come into a town council like this and mock God Almighty? If I could have been there, I would have objected. I would have said, "How dare you? What is wrong with you? Was it broken and twisted in your soul to the point where you would think this would be the right thing to do? To be so smug and to smirk and to mock God Almighty?" And I'd like to have said to him, "Whatever it is, I'll be praying for your soul. I hope you repent, because one day you will meet the God you just mocked. It would be good for you to remember what I've said to you today." I was revulsed. When was the last time you were revulsed? Was it maybe on May 25th or somewhere right after that, when we saw those four police officers kneeling down on the neck of George Floyd? I was revulsed when I saw that. I think every decent human being had to be. How could you do that? How could you do that to a fellow human being? How could you just kneel there? You're missing 45, 46 seconds. All this means crying out and saying, "I can't breathe." Revulsion is the only word for things like, "When was the last time you were revulsed?" Whenever that was, I want you to think of your revulsion at that event, or whatever it was you were seeing or experiencing. Multiply that by about a billion, and that's what our holy God experiences when He is revulsed at the kinds of things that we're talking about, at the simpleness of humanity. Our God is, is a holy God. He cannot abide sin, and He will not abide sin. Men who suppress the truth, Paul says here, men who suppress the truth. This is not indifference toward the truth, this is not shrugging your shoulder. This is an active opposition to the truth. You can only, you can only suppress something that you know is real. This is an active opposition to something you know is real and is there. So these are men who know the truth, and they're trying everything they can to push it down, to hold it back. And that's what God's wrath is poured out for. You know how there are people in our culture who are triggered by anything that's remotely religious, and I put the words quotes, put the quotes around the word religious, you know, the people who told Target they had to abandon the Salvation Army? The Salvation Army, is there a vanilla organization in the world that does more good than Salvation Army? And yet, it used to be, I don't know if it's still holding true, they convinced the Salvation Army, they shouldn't let the Salvation Army, they convinced Target, they shouldn't let Salvation Army ring their bells and ask people to put money in the kettles outside of Target. This Christmas, whenever you go someplace and see them, I hope you'll double up on your contributions to the Salvation Army, and I don't get a kickback from them at all. Well, the people who are triggered because somewhere, there might be an elementary school having a Christmas celebration, might be singing Christmas carols, doing a Christmas play or Christmas musical, and they have to shut it down. People who, in their atheistic hate groups, who scream that a military chaplain might actually pray in Jesus' name. It mustn't have that. Other hate groups who can't abide by a manger scene on public property or display the Ten Commandments, even though the Ten Commandments are plastered all over the Supreme Court Building in Washington DC. These are people who, they must at some level know the truth. And rather than shrugging their shoulders and saying, "Yeah, whatever", no, they actively seek to suppress it. Now, look, don't get me wrong, we're sinners just like they are. God's just poured out His grace on us. And they're not to be hated, they're to be pitied, they're to be prayed for. But these are the kinds of people that Paul is describing here, is they actively suppress the truth and work against everything that is of God. These are people who actually think that the words "separation of church and state" appear in the Constitution. They probably never read the First Amendment, much less the rest of the Constitution. Just over a year ago, I had the great privilege of being in Washington DC after our middle daughter's graduation from college, and going to the National Archives and sitting about an arm's length away from the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the Bill of Rights. And I'm not a real emotional person, but I found myself trying not to, not to come to tears as I looked at those founding documents of ours, knowing what they've given us and the price that was paid for those documents to come into existence and for us to preserve them through the years. It was one of the greatest works of genius by very flawed men ever. But for people who've never seen the First Amendment, let me see if I can help them out with this. Here's what the First Amendment says. "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishing of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or bridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." I'll leave that on the screen for just a minute and ask, can you find the word "separation of church and state" in there? Anywhere? Anyone? Anyone? Nope? It's not your question. They're not in there. They're not in there. You probably know this, if you're watching this tonight, you're probably sharper than the average secularist. The word "separation of church and state" appeared from a private letter from Thomas Jefferson early on in his presidency to the Danville, Connecticut Baptists. And he was assuring them the government would not meddle in their religious practices. He wasn't saying, "Keep your nose out of the government." He's saying, "The government will respect you and keep our tentacles out of you." Somehow we've forgotten that through the years. Somehow we've gotten that backwards. So Paul is saying, "These are people who actively try to suppress God's truth, people who, people who know the truth, but work against it every way they can." Alright, so I just want to say to people like that, man, if you're threatened by a plastic Jesus in a manger scene, what are you gonna do when you meet the real thing? If you're triggered by the bell ringers, the Salvation Army, what are you gonna do when that last trumpet sounds? Sometime between now and then, sooner rather than later, because you're not guaranteed tomorrow, I hope you will come to terms with who you are before a holy God asking for His mercy, His forgiveness. It's there for the asking. Grace, it's free. All you gotta do is ask it. Robert George is a professor at Princeton University, professor of ethics. And I love something he writes here, talking about the contrast, the conflict between the forces of secularism and the forces of religion broadly construed. Secularism versus religion, this is something, if you're not familiar with Robert George, I hope you'll make yourself familiar with this brilliant, brilliant ethicist. Here's what Professor George says. "Secularism is a competing ideology, a separate religion, and secularists want to control the courts that decide disputes between the two. That's like allowing a pitcher to act as umpire, calling his own balls and strikes. Surprise, it's going to be 27 up, 27 down." And it's no surprise, we've seen this happen over and over and over again. Things that nobody voted for, no legislature passed a law that concerned these things, and yet the courts have interjected themselves and has given us things like abortion on demand through all nine months of a pregnancy, even up to the day of birth and after birth. Do you think the founders of this country, when they wrote the Constitution and Bill of Rights, have that in mind? Nobody voted for that. No legislature passed that law. The Supreme Court found that in their, somewhere in the penumbra of the Constitution, the amendments, okay? Recently, they redefined marriage. Nobody voted for that. Not at that time. Supreme Court did it all on their own. Just recently, they decided to give transgenders a whole new set of rights to redefine what sex means. Again, if you let secularists run the courts, this is what we get. Now, this is not a political diatribe. These are not political issues. I mean, they're moral and spiritual issues, having to find a very clear expression in the political arena. So I would urge you to get informed of these things, and whatever else you do, come November, vote. I can't tell you how to vote. I could. But I can urge you, as a Christian, to be a good citizen in this country and exercise your constitutional duty and responsibility and vote. Alright, back to, back to Paul's picture here of humanity. And again, at this point, it is not a pretty picture. I don't know if he had these passages in mind, but he might well have. Paul knew his Bible, what we call the Old Testament, he knew it pretty doggone well. Here's what the Psalmist says. "The wicked freely strut about, and what is vile is honored among men." Psalm twelve eight. And then the prophet Isaiah adds this. "Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who substitute darkness for light and light for darkness, who substitute bitter for sweet and sweet for bitter. Woe to those who are wise in their own eyes and clever in their own sight." I was talking with, uh, my good friend Jerry Reed, not the singer, but the Bible teacher at Westminster, Westminster Christian and member of our church, and has been teaching Bible for us on Sunday mornings for, uh, quite a long time. And Jerry was telling me, we're having a discussion last week of where our culture is. He said, "We now move past post-modernism, which says there's no such thing as truth, now into post-truth." And that means that there might be truth out there, we don't know, but so, I've got my truth, you've got your truth. Nobody can know, which is another contradiction in itself. If that's true, then how could you possibly know it's true? Anyway, we've passed post-modernism now into post-truth. So how many times have we had somebody come on TV because they've been caught doing something really reprehensible or, or morally, uh, totally embarrassing, and he'll say, "Well, this is my truth. I am filling the blank. That's my truth. That's my truth." So everybody can have their own individual truths. Try that in the natural realm. Well, I know your truth is that two objects cannot occupy the same space at the same time. My truth is that they can. Well, step out in the street in front of the next bus that comes by and let's see how your truth works. It doesn't work in the physical realm, it doesn't work in the spiritual and ethical and moral realm either. So we have a culture now that finds truth a little too strong a medicine to be able to stomach. Meanwhile, we have a faith that says we can know the truth and the truth will set us free. And then Paul goes on to say, verses nineteen and twenty, that all men everywhere, all people everywhere are without excuse because God has made it apparent to them all. He has made it apparent in creation, that there has to be a Creator. Theologians will tell you, there, there are basically two sources, there are two kinds of revelation. There's natural revelation and spirit, and special revelation. Natural revelation is just what it sounds like, the revelation we get from nature. That people can look up at the sky, at the sun, at the moon, the stars. They can look around nature, and they can say, "This whole thing is a little too beautiful, a little too orderly, a little too complex, to just be one enormous accident." It screams of an intelligent design which requires a designer. Okay? That's natural revelation, that all people everywhere can look around them and say, "Somebody, something, some things," had to put this here, it just didn't, didn't just happen. Now, we can let our atheists and agnostic friends look down their noses at it, but every single culture in the history of the world has had a belief in a higher power, a supreme being or beings, every single one. Now, it could be that every culture in the history of the world has been wrong, and atheists and agnostics are right. They run about five percent in any given culture. Could be that the five percent are right, and the ninety-five percent of us are wrong. Could be that they're right, and every culture in the history of the world is wrong. If you were a gambling person, where would you bet? Now, truth is not up for majority vote, just is. So either there is a God or there's not, and you cannot prove that beyond reasonable doubt, beyond, beyond a doubt either way, that there is a God or there's not. You cannot prove God that way. You can try it in logic, you cannot do it empirically. But if the vast majority of people in the history of the world have believed that to be true, there's only a relative handful, a small but very loud handful, who said, "No, I don't think so. I don't think that's right." Again, if you were a gambling person, where would you bet? Paul says, "All people everywhere are without excuse because they could look around at creation and say, 'There's gotta be a Creator.'" Now, that's natural revelation. The second kind of revelation, no, is special revelation. And you don't get that by looking at nature. No, special revelation is what it takes for us to know that there's a Savior. There's a Messiah, his name is Jesus, and he's of the tribe of Judah. He's the lion of the tribe of Judah, and he was born to a virgin named Mary in a tiny little hamlet in southern Israel, in the year we reckon is year zero. And that he grew up to become the greatest teacher and prophet, preacher, miracle worker that the nation of Israel has ever seen, and he was executed on a cross by the Romans. And he was raised again from the dead three days later. He sends into heaven, and he sits at the right hand of God the Father Almighty. And he will come back one day to judge the living and the dead. Now, you don't get that by nature. You need special revelation for that, either the Bible for that. Which one? I'm so glad we can study it together, we can look into it, and I hope, between Wednesdays, between Sundays, I really hope you will study your Bible on your own. There's no substitute for it, for reading it and studying it on your own. Now, the question comes up, and by the way, look at Psalm nineteen sometimes, it's a great, great ode to, a poem, a song to natural revelation. "The heavens are telling of the glory of God, and their expanses declaring the work of His hands. Day to day pour forth speech, and night to night reveals knowledge. There is no speech nor other words, their voice not heard, their line has gone out through all the earth. In them he has placed, and their utterances to the end of the earth, and in them he has placed a, a tent for the sun, which is as bridegroom coming out of his chamber. He rejoices as a strong man to run his course. He's rising us from one end of the heavens and a circuit to the other end of them, and nothing is hidden from its heat." And goes on to do, be a, a praise song to the word of God. And, and anyway, Psalm nineteen, I didn't mean to get into that, but it's one of my favorite Psalms. And it's one that I committed largely to memory, so sorry about that, it just lapsed. Back, back to natural revelation. Read Psalm nineteen, it'll tell you a lot about natural revelation. But the question arises, can fallen man reason his way to salvation? Can somebody without revelation, without God, directly reaching out to him, just reason his way to salvation? Well, my answer would be, and some theologians disagree, my answer would be no, because in the fall of mankind, the fall of our first parents, where they brought all humanity down with them, we took our minds with us. So as wonderful as the human brain is, as, as incredible as it is and how the, the, the marvelous feats our brains can, can accomplish, they're still darkened, they're still limited, they're still very finite. And we cannot reason our way to God. For that, we need God's special revelation, either in the Scriptures or through somebody else, or somehow, sometimes God just speaks directly to individuals and calls them to himself. But we can't reason our way back to salvation. Now, verses twenty-one through twenty-five, and I gotta pick up the pace here because I'd really like to finish chapter one tonight. Verse twenty-one through twenty-five, basically, Paul says, this is any, I'm sorry, I, I breezed right by a great quote from Francis Schaeffer, so let me give you that. Paul clearly states that even though mankind has fallen, man is still a moral and rational being. He is not dehumanized. He says, "He has a conscience, and he can still appreciate the wonder of creation all around him." Again, that's, that's natural revelation. Sorry, I got, I got on a, I got on a rant there and breezed right through Francis Schaeffer, sorry about that. Now, Paul says then in, uh, in verses twenty-one through twenty-five, not only has man suppressed the truth about the one true God, he has then gone on to create any number of false gods, what we would call idols. The late, great British theologian writer, G.K. Chesterton, put it this way, and he said, "Man, when man stops believing in God, he doesn't then believe in nothing, he believes in anything." Now, you can think of a number of current examples, but I would just mention the, the New Age movement, I guess, is still out there and it's kind of fizzled, but for a long time, the New Age movement gave you all manner of nonsense. High priestess Shirley MacLaine, but many others who fell into the New Age movement trap. The, the, in, in Great Britain, one of the fastest growing alternative religions, because Christianity is on such a low tide there, the fastest growing alternative religions is Jediism. There are over twenty thousand people in Great Britain who filled out their census, asking their religious preference, they put Jedi. I'm a Jedi. You wanna say, "Really?" Really? Let me know how that goes. Anyway, but, but, we just, we will engage in all manner of foolishness when we reject belief in the one true God. We, we can create all manner of nonsense. And here, Paul says that they have actually gone to making, uh, images of God in the form of four-footed animals and crawling creatures. It's basically following Genesis, chapter one, and saying, instead of God creating these things in humanity in his own image, now humanity made in the image of God is creating the image, their image of God in terms of these four-footed creatures and, and crawling things and so forth, and the making of idols. And that's when, this is the first time Paul says, "Therefore God gave them over, he gave them over to their desires." You may recall that the Genesis, chapter thirty-two, the people of Israel are getting tired of waiting on Moses. He's up on Mount Sinai meeting with God, and he's about to come down with these two stone tablets, pretty important. But they get tired of waiting on him, so they take all their gold, and they melt it down and put it into a great, great big cauldron, and well, you know, I'll come to a great big golden calf, and they worship that. Really? God Almighty took them out of Egypt, out of the house of slavery? And he's bringing them through the wilderness to their promised land? And he's led them with a pillar of fire by night, a pillar of cloud by day, and he's done miracles for them? And Moses is up on the mountain meeting with him? And, and you're gonna make a golden calf? A friend of mine once said that the difference is today, if that was us, we'd make a golden image of ourselves, and we just worship ourselves and our own desires. We haven't stopped making idols, we've just made more sophisticated ones. A lot of them you have to plug into the wall or look at on a, on a computer monitor or a smartphone. So Paul says, "God gives them over to their desires and the foolishness." Let me get back to something from Schaeffer here. "Scholars today will talk about people making God in their own image, and will think they are rather clever to have made this observation. But Paul observed this in the first century. Either God exists and made man in his image, or man came out of the fog and made himself a god in his own image." Nothing new under the sun. Jonathan Edwards was one of the greatest, uh, greatest minds that America's ever produced. If all you know of him is sinners in the hands of angry God, you really don't know much about Jonathan Edwards. Absolutely brilliant man. And I'm summarizing something he said in a sermon, his sermon. If you ever want, if you ever start thinking you're kind of a smart person, you're, you're really intelligent, read some Jonathan Edwards, it'll bring you right back down. Okay? He was, he lived seventeen oh three to seventeen fifty-eight, and, uh, and yet produced some of the most incredible works and, and, and some of the deepest thoughts in, of anybody in American history. Anyway, Jonathan Edwards was asked, uh, uh, addressed in a cer, in a sermon, why do we run from the one true God? And here's what he had to say about it. There are four reasons we run from God. God is holy, completely, perfectly righteous, and we're anything but that. We stand condemned by His holiness. He's omnipotent, He's all-powerful. We're not. We stand, we feel small and impotent in contrast to His power and omn, omnipotence. He's omniscient, He knows everything. He is all-knowing. He knows everything about me, everything I've ever done that I hope nobody would ever find out, every thought I've ever had, I wouldn't want anybody to know. He knows that about me, and I made to feel small and, and dirty before Him, and He's immutable. He never changes. He will never grow old and slack, and as I said earlier, sit back on his heavenly rocking por, uh, uh, rocking chair on the porch and say, "Oh, well, come on, let, let them have some fun, boys, we'll be boys." No, Jonathan Edwards said, and I'm summarizing a much longer argument, one of his, some sermon called "Men Naturally, Men Naturally are God's Enemies." He says, "These are the four reasons why we run from a holy God. He is all these things, and we are none of them." Now, that's bad news. Excuse me, if I, if that was all I got to tonight, man, it would be a reason to be depressed between now and next Wednesday, or at least now and Sunday. So I won't leave you there. But before I move on from that particular part of the argument, let me get back to something Schaeffer says. "This is what Adam did earlier. He walked away from life and chose death. It is the world our forefathers and the last few generations of Northern European and American culture have chosen. This tragic choice is perhaps most clear in the United States, but has occurred there most recently after about eighteen ninety. Is a blackness of a world man does not understand." I want you to know that he wrote those words sometime in the nineteen sixties. Can't tell you exactly here, but he wrote those words fifty-plus years ago. Man, did he see ahead of his time. Man was he ahead of his time in seeing what's coming down the path. That we have chosen a world apart from God, and we've walked away from the God who made us in his image and loved us with an everlasting love. Second, God gave them over. He gives them over to their own depraved passions, and he says, "They receive their own person, the due penalty of their error." Now, this causes a lot of controversy and a lot of consternation today. I have to address this, and because it's here in Romans one, so I'm going to address it as, as honestly and directly as I can, and yet not dwell on too long. And he's talking about homosexual lifestyle. Now, I can hear all over Miami, or wherever you guys are watching, "No, Pastor Kent, don't talk about these things. Do you know how politically incorrect that is? Do you know how un-woke that is if you talk about this from a biblical perspective?" You're right, it's all those things. So let me get right into it. Paul here is describing depravity in some pretty broad terms, but he says, "It has even reached this point where women desire other women sexually, and men desire other men sexually." As he's talking about homosexuality, and he says, "They receive in their bodies the, the penalties of their behaviors." Now, when AIDS came out, or when AIDS began to, to hit the planet in nineteen eighties, I heard a number of people say, "Yep, this guy's judgment on gay people. He looked down at them, got disgusted with them, he cooked up a new plague and sent it to all them gays." You know what? I shouldn't say it like that. I heard some very intelligent, very godly people say those things. I, I don't have time to get into it now, but I spent an enormous amount of time, starting in the mid-eighties, with people with AIDS. Unless you are in the gay lifestyle yourself, or you have been, you have not spent as much time around, around gay people as I have. And so as I talk about these things, and I hear the cries of "homophobia and hate or hate speech," go on. I make a living with words, definitions are important to me. Homophobia. A phobia is an irrational fear. Homophobia therefore is the irrational fear of homosexuals and/or homosexuality. I'm not afraid of homosexuals or homosexuality, not the least bit. I, I know this cliche, I've got plenty of gay friends, I love them, they love me, we disagree. But we're friends, we can do that. Okay? Don't hate them. Don't hate them at all. Don't hate anybody just because he or she's gay. How tragic would that be? Okay? It's not hate speech. Anybody that wants to shut you down or shout you down when you talk about these things, and, and because you have a biblical framework saying, "Oh, you're homophobic, you're, you're a hater, that's hate speech." That's not a reason to argue with. Those are just slurs. They're just designed to embarrass you and intimidate you and make you shut up. That is the other person's way of saying, "I cannot engage you on an adult level in a conversation, so I'm just going to slur you and hope you'll be intimidated and shut up." Don't fall for that. Say, "No, I'm not afraid, and I don't hate." I disagree. Are you mature enough that we can have a conversation about that even though we disagree? If not, well, I'm sorry. Maybe when you grow up, we can have that conversation. Meantime, I'll pray for you. So I don't hate gay people, and I'm not afraid of gay people. And I'm telling you again, I've got plenty of gay friends, have and still have, have had and still have plenty of gay friends. And if any of them wanted to, they could step up and tell you that my own relationship with them are, are very open and friendly and loving. My wife and I both. Alright? So, it's not hate speech, this is Bible talk. And Paul here is saying quite clearly that homosexual lifestyle is sinful. Now, the Bible addresses homosexuality any number of times, in the Old Testament and in the New. This is the only place in the Bible that the biblical writer addresses homosexuality by itself. This is the only place that is singled out. Every other place is singled out, at least in the New Testament, let me say that, at least in the New Testament, every other place, it is in It is in a long list of other sins, including things like gluttony and drunkenness and insolence, and disobedience to parents. So, yes, homosexuality is a sin, but it's not the only sin. And it's not an unforgivable sin. It is a sin for which Jesus died. And it's, and it's under the blood of Christ, it can be forgiven. I'm not naive about this, I realize if you have a same-sex attraction, that's harder, that's harder to get rid of or to, or to change than even gluttony or drunkenness, and those are not easy. I realize that, that sexual orientation goes deeper to the core of who and what you are than those other sinful lifestyles. But it does happen, does happen. You say, "Oh yeah, come on, Pastor Kent, everybody knows it doesn't." You perhaps know the name of Bill de Blasio, he is the current mayor of New York City. I understand the people in New York City, most of them wish he wasn't, but he is. His wife is a woman by the name of, I hope I'm saying her name right, Shirlene McCray. Shirlene, Shirlane McCray, Shirlene McCray. Nineteen seventy-nine, Shirlene McCray wrote an essay, an essence, making the title, "I Am a Lesbian." And yet, she's married to a man. She was married to a man. And when asked about it in two thousand and twelve, she said, "In the nineteen seventies, I identified as a lesbian and wrote about it. In nineteen ninety-one, I met the love of my life and married him." So, apparently, change is possible. These people are not, they're certainly not conservative Bible-thumping Christians, to my knowledge, and maybe Christians don't know. They're not conservative Bible-thumpers. And yet, she's changed her orientation somehow. If you don't know the name of Rosario Champagne Butterfield, Rosario Champagne Butterfield, Google her and read her story. What a, what a wonderful trophy of God's grace, that Rosario Champagne Butterfield. Um, I don't have time to tell you her story either, but she is a trophy of God's grace. And was leading a very, leading a very committed, and she would describe it fairly militant, lesbian lifestyle, until this pastor, this Christian pastor and his wife just loved her, just loved her. And through their love and their grace and their mercy toward her, she changed, and she's happily married to a man today. I could say a lot more about this, but I would simply go on to say, I mean, I've got example after example of these things. I'll simply go on to say, if you are in a homosexual lifestyle, first of all, I'm, I hurt with you. I really do. I know enough from my gay friends to know that, I don't care how much the culture glorifies it, even today when it's so widely accepted and even flawed. It's not an easy lifestyle, and you have suffered greatly in your life, and I know that you have. You might not admit it, you might not talk to anybody else about it, but I know enough of your stories to know that it is, it's a very painful lifestyle on a number of levels. And you, you have had, you've gone through incredible pain in your life, and I'm so sorry, I really am. I'd give anything to give you the magic wand or the magic pill that would help you overcome all that. I can't do that for you, I can just tell you, take it to the cross, cry out to God and ask his grace. I don't know what he'll do for you, but I know you'll experience his grace, his mercy, his forgiveness if you want it. And ask his help. Uh, again, I could say a lot more about it, but I need to wrap up. So, in verses twenty-eight through thirty-one, there's a third God gave them over, a third God gave them over. See, it's not just homosexuality. It is not only homosexual lifestyle, it's sexual promiscuity of all kinds. This is a message that we in the evangelical church need to hear. We're real quick to condemn gays, or at least a lot of churches are. We're not so quick to come down on sexual promiscuity of all kinds, adultery and premarital sex. And a lot of us, because so many of us are guilty, we don't want to speak about it, okay? Church, guess what? We're guilty of every sin in the Bible. We have to speak about it. We just can't do it with any attitude of holier-than-thou or superiority. We're not broken and flawed people, in need of the grace of God as much as any sinner mentioned in any sinful lifestyle mentioned in the Scriptures. So, Paul says in verse thirty-two, "They not only do these things, they give hearty encouragement to others who do them." Ever been at a sporting event or a concert? And this is to take a concert, and a performer on stage, when they drop the most vulgar expressions, the F-bombs, the most explicit sexual references, what does the crowd do? They roar their approval. "Yeah, yeah, tell them about it." They only do these things. They give hearty approval to others who do them as well. That's unfortunately, I think, a portrait of our culture. Look, tonight, I realize this has been, this has been the dark cloud to which grace is the silver lining. It gets a whole lot better from here, it really does. But Paul has to show us how bad the bad news is, how catastrophically bad the bad news is, so we can begin to appreciate how good the good news is. Talks about these degrading passions, so he can, he can paint with broad strokes, saying, "All men everywhere, without excuse. We're all under God's judgment, we're all, we're all exposed to his wrath." Unless, unless there's remedy. And that's what Romans is all about. I talked a lot about degrading passions tonight, because that's what Romans one eighteen through thirty-two are all about. Are there uplifting passions? Are there uplifting passions? Absolutely, absolutely there are. Over a hundred years ago, preacher by the name of Thomas DeWitt-Talmage said this. "What we want in this age above all is fire, God's holy fire, burning the hearts of men, stirring their brains, impelling their emotions, thrilling their tongues, glowing in their countences, vibrating in their actions, expanding their intellectual power, infusing all their knowledge, logic, and rhetoric into a burning stream. Let this baptism descend, and thousands of us who up to this day have been the commonplace or weak ministers, such as my easily passed from memory, would then become mighty." Thomas DeWitt-Talmage. That's a lot for tonight. If you've hung in with me the whole time, God bless you. Tell you what, just for that, you don't have to come to church this Sunday. It's my gift to you. Uh, Lord, please lift this plague so that we can all begin to worship together again. I miss my church family, and I know they miss one another. Uh, listen, I, a quick commercial. As I told you, my friend Jerry Reed, Dr. Jerry Reed, he makes me call him that now, finished up his Christian education classes on our church's website, kennelprez.org. He finished up the, his classes this past Sunday. And so, what we're going to do Sunday mornings is we're going to rerun my Romans classes, going back to lesson number one, which this is lesson number five. So, Sunday mornings at nine thirty, if you want, if you missed any of this, you just want to go back and catch it again, or you just want to look at my pretty face one more time. Anyway, for whatever reason, nine thirty Sunday morning, you go on our website and you'll catch the Romans classes over again. This is the longest one I've done yet, the others were shorter. So, you've got plenty of time on Sunday morning to roll out of bed and turn on your computer and catch Romans reruns. Thank you for being with me. If any of my Wednesday morning brothers are joining me tonight, brothers, it's good to have you along. Everybody else, thank you for joining me. The Lord bless you and keep you, make his face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. May he lift up his countenance upon you and give you his peace. Amen. I hope to see you Sunday morning, or you'll see me Sunday morning. I hope you'll be with me next Wednesday night. God bless.